All right, we should be good, good to go.
All right, thank everybody for logging on tonight. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Mayor and Council of City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona, held on Tuesday, December 15th at 7:00 PM by Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lewis Pollock.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacominio.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns. No, did we lose her?
She was here.
Okay, maybe she will join us shortly. Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Did you hear?
No.
No.
Say it loud. Now they're...
I got you that time, okay. City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager Ashley Coronado, City Clerk Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, Jim Richardson, Fire Marshal, Joe Estes, City Attorney. And I think Leslie just joined us.
Okay. So for the moment of silence tonight, you may want to notice I have a little message behind me, one of which is peace on earth. I chose that besides Merry Christmas because though we may not be at war, we are at war across the world against this pandemic and the COVID virus. So I just wish everybody would take a moment and reflect on what their year has been and anybody that's been affected by this and either pray or wish us all a much better next year. So we won't meet again until the new year, so let's take a moment. All right, thank you, everybody. I don't have any proclamations tonight, but just really quickly on a couple of announcements. I just want everybody to know I might be a little bit different in running this than what you've been used to, but my belief is I really like parliamentary procedure and I plan on following that as absolutely best I can. But I also want everybody to know that I don't think I need to use quite so many official names. If we discuss something, I might call you by your first name. Don't feel like that's something bad. We're friends, we're neighbors, we're all representing our city. When it becomes, you know, down to critical points and votes, then of course we need more formal situations. The last thing, we all know that we don't interrupt each other. We give each other a chance to say whatever it is they want to say. However, there is a procedure called point of order and if I goof up or think that I'm outside of what should be happening, please just say point of order and you get a chance to discuss that and we can use that on each other and not be, you know, feel like we've offended anybody. The last thing I'm going to ask for is because of me mainly, mainly is when we call for a roll vote where we're not actually called our names, we'll just say yea or nays. If we can just kind of raise our hand when we say yea or nay, they'll help me because that's hard for me to hear sometimes all everybody's vote. So if we can kind of work on that, that would be great and I appreciate that and and we will move on. So at this point, I guess the next is call to the public. And so I think we probably have some letters to read. Is that right, Ms. Landers?
Yes, Mayor, we have eight this evening.
Okay, let's hear them.
Okay. This is from Vanessa Serrano regarding outdoor dining. Yes, I support outdoor dining on weekends. Closing downtown from post office to west corner of subway street on Saturdays and Sundays during holidays would help our economy and safety of our pedestrians. Locals complaining about this idea should remain at home. Unite and stay safe. Mask a must while not eating. Thank you, Vanessa Serrano, Desert Diva Hats. Joseph Lewis in regards to item number 11, premise extensions. Bisbee Mayor and City Council, I would like to speak in favor of Agenda Item 11 with regard to extensions of premises per Governor Ducey's recent executive order 2020-60 titled "Easing Regulations to Encourage Outdoor Dining." This extension of premises especially makes sense in Old Bisbee that has very little room for outdoor patio seating. The hope is that the Bisbee Mayor and City Council will approve a process at tonight's meeting by which applicants can easily and quickly apply for permits to allow for these seating areas in public parking spaces located in front of business establishments. Further, that the process meets the requirements in the executive order that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control, DLLC, shall accept and review requests by liquor license who are seeking to temporarily extend their premises outdoors for the purpose of mitigating the spread of COVID-19 after a city or town or county has approved the extension of the premises. Thank you for your consideration, Joseph Lewis. Fred Miller, State of the City. I suggest that a State of the City session be held sometime the first couple of weeks of January, perhaps in the form of a work session or an agenda item for a regular session or maybe an open Zoom session for all residents with calling questions. We are six months into this difficult fiscal year and we should have solid information about how things are going and what is planned by the city's administrative staff for the remainder of the year. The session would include some statistics from the treasurer, how much revenue is down or up compared to budget figures and comparison with the previous year at this time. Gross figures that show how much has been spent above and below budget and what departments are above or below budget. Projections for the remaining six months and what it will mean for departments. The city manager could give a presentation summation where the city is due, where the city is doing well or in trouble and based on the budget figures. If showing a revenue shortage, how that will be dealt with within department. A projection for the remainder of the year would also be helpful. Mayor Budge could outline some of his ideas for the coming year, including dealing with the pandemic, the new city hall, the old city hall, and projects he hopes to see to completion, from Fred Miller. This is from Heather Glenn. Honorable Mayor Budge, Council Members and City Staffs. Congratulations to Mayor Budge and Councilmember Pollock on being elected to the Bisbee City Council. As a resident of Bisbee, it is refreshing to experience transparency and inclusion from our local government. May it continue. Item number three, IGA with Sierra Vista for Animal Care Services. I urge the council to vote no on this item. Items five, Animal Care Services Petition, and nine, one month funding extension for Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter. I have attached an additional 33 signatures on two pages to add to the original petition as these pages were received after the original 22 pages had already been submitted to the city for the council meeting of November 17th, 2020. I support another month of funding to the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter to continue operating the animal shelter through January 2021. This time last year, Bisbee evicted the residents of the Hillcrest Department the middle of winter during the holidays, contributing to the already alarming homeless situation in Cochise County. I don't understand why that action had to be taken at that specific time. I ask that the mayor and council step into the shoes of the employees of the animal shelter and try to imagine the emotional roller coaster they have experienced since the shelter funding was threatened. Once again, it's holiday time. I'm sure they wondered, should I be looking for another job? Do I dare buy Christmas presents for my kids or stockpile my earnings in case I'm laid off? I applaud them for hanging in hanging in there handling Christmas presents, excuse me, handling their duties in a professional manner through the chaos. I hope the mayor and council will support their excellent hard work in a positive manner. Does Bisbee want to become famous for heartless holidays? I don't believe that's who we are. Item eight, RFP for Animal Care Services. I fully support the mayor and council taking the lead directing City Manager Coleman to draft yet another RFP regarding animal care services. This one hopefully will reflect the values and desires of the Bisbee community. Third time's a charm. I would like to see procedures clarified on what animal services the police department is responsible for after the shelter closes. It seems they used to respond and transport animals to the shelter, but no longer do. The RFP, Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter Funding Situation, has caused some confusion resolving recent loose dog calls. Item number seven, New Police Department Copier Contract. Thank you to Chief Chave for proposing an opportunity for the city to reduce spending. I wish to know if more than one vendor was researched and if the proposed contract should have an RFP since the 60-month total is more than $12,000. I appreciate Mr. Haro's update on the city recycling efforts during the December 1st council meeting. What a surprise it was to learn that ADEQ recognized the city of Bisbee's recycling efforts during the pandemic. I'm a bit confused about how the hub-and-spoke system is any different than what we had already, what had already been in place before being stopped by the city and increasing recycling fees for providing no residential recycling services. I request that the mayor and council place an item on an upcoming agenda with regard to possibly reducing the increased recycling fees. Thank you all for your time and commitment. Respectfully submitted, Heather Glenn. This is from Chris Bobey regarding the shelter. Hello all, I hope this email finds you in good spirits and feeling well. I am writing about Bisbee's Animal Shelter. Again, I strongly urge you to fully fund it as before and to provide its staff with a longer-term contract. I truly hope that you'll award the contract to it and its existing operation and treat its staff with more compassion, appreciation, and professionalism than has been shown in the past several months. It must be clear to you that Bisbee Animal Shelter and indeed Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter are appreciated for their conscientious work, community support, and talented fundraising. If you must cut programs or departments, I expect you to cut them equally across the board. And please start by asking more thorough questions of all the departments and particularly that of Public Works Director, Mr. Haro. The necessity of the new equipment he is buying and leasing needs far more scrutiny and analysis, in my view. The contracts and the vendors he is dealing for also need meticulous scrutiny, as would all agreements and contracts you award. Please rein in the spending starting there and listen to the priorities as expressed by your residents and constituents. Sincerely, Christiane Bobey. This is Yvette Ponte. Greetings, Mayor and Council. This is of the highest moral value and not only moral value, but practical value at the present time. Winston Churchill War Speech, House of Commons, September 3rd, 1939. On December 2nd, Governor Doug Ducey issued an executive order easing red tape on outdoor dining, allowing restaurants to temporarily extend their premises after approval from the local governing body. A temporary premise extension is beneficial not only to the establishment, but also to the residents and visitors as it allows for an increased number of safer outdoor social distance options for the public. Allows establishments to more safely expand increased capacity with use of outdoor space while reducing lines and wait times in areas that may at present be considered unsafe. Will open up funding opportunities for establishments. If the expansion is not approved, local businesses will be denied the opportunity to apply for grants and loans specific to extension of premises. With the support of mayor and council, temporary extensions can be regulated. Risk management procedures can be addressed and determined. Design elements can be uniformly coordinated and loss of time and finance can be mitigated. The following is a short list of individuals I have reached out personally that are in support of temporary premise extension and they have all given me permission to list and announce their names during this call to the public. They are all copied on this email. In alphabetical order, one Barbara Transbuer, Mile High Munchies. Two Ben Lepley, Resident, DRB Chairman. Three Beth Morehouse, Bisbee Brownstone. Four Brandy Fisher, Old Bisbee Brewing Company and Distillery Representative and Resident. Five Cynthia Conroy, Bisbee Vogue Inc. Six Dan Easton, Easton Properties. Seven David Cobb, Acacia. Eight David Russell, BTC. Nine Deborah Till Hall, Castle Rock Casita. Ten Dolores Medina, Resident. Eleven Eliza Adams, Real Estate Agent. Twelve Frank and Naomi Torno, Residents. Thirteen Helen Lampinen, Copper Queen. Fourteen John Sky Lithick. Fifteen Jonas and Jamie Funston, Residents. Sixteen Joseph Lewis, Bisbee Social Club. Seventeen Carrie Blankenship, Screaming Banshee Pizza. Eighteen Lee Kouser, Resident. Resident. Nineteen Maria Osaro, Resident and Counselor, Bisbee High School. Twenty Patty Fishlock Cafe Cornucopia. Twenty-one Rebecca Brown, Resident. Twenty-two Savannah Anderson, Resident. Twenty-three Sean De Kramer, DRB Vice Chairman. Twenty-four Steve Drew, the Bisbee Grand Hotel. Twenty-five Sue Sargent, St. Elmo Bar. Twenty-six Tony and Robert Cole, Residents. In closing, we are in hope that the mayor and council will make a motion to approve the temporary extension of premises for Bisbee, Arizona. As Ralph Waldo Emerson wrote, now is the time to be an opener of doors. Sincerely, Yvette Ponte. Savannah Anderson, Mayor and City Council of Bisbee. I write to you today to implore you to assist not only the business owners that are struggling during these trying times, but the employees of those businesses and to provide citizens of Bisbee.
Could I have a poll, please? I'd like to ask the city attorney. This is in violation of the city code. We are repeating numerous calls to the public, which are not, there's no value added in this and I would like a ruling from the city attorney.
Councilmember Hanson, Mayor Budge, and members of the council. Pursuant to the ordinance, you're allowed for oral presentations. And yes, they're not to be repetitious in confined to three minutes.
Correct.
So if the council would like to, it would be in the council's discretion if the council would like to consider that these are repetitious, that they're submitted on the record and provided to the council so you can move forward with the rest of the meeting. The council can do that. Or you can continue to read through the rest of these. It's in these circumstances where you don't actually have people coming before council and in a group or something and being more organized. It's a little more difficult to to manage whether or not something's repetitious or not. But you know, if that's what the council would prefer, I think the mayor could ask for just a roll call as to if the council consider these repetitious and have them deemed submitted on the record and move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's part of what my problem is, is that when we were holding open meetings, a lot of people will say they said what I wanted to say. But it's hard to determine now because I don't have them all before me, who determines what's repetitious and what's not. So my preference was if it isn't going to take up much more time that we let everybody have their three minutes. But I'm willing to put it out for a vote to the council, what you would do, what you would like to do. But that would be my preference. By, Mr. Lou, go ahead.
How many do we have left?
The remainder of the one I was reading and one more from Carrie Blankenship, again, in regards to outdoor dining.
In the interest of open meetings and transparency, I would suggest that we just go ahead and finish up with what we have and deal with this issue when we're better prepared to speak to it.
Thank you, Councilmember Pollock. Could I have a raise of hands to say if I agree with that? I would just, if we have a, it's like we have a majority there, just finish that one and one more and we can delve into the rest of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand, and I'm going to pick up at the second paragraph from Savannah Anderson. I understand that this is unprecedented. However, we are living in unprecedented times and this calls for innovative and well-thought-out actions on all of our beheads. Providing individuals a place outdoors to enjoy a meal or drink is not going to be the new enjoyable experience for everyone. It is massively safer than indoor seating during this pandemic. It surely would save lives. I do ask that you please talk to law enforcement and have them follow and enforce the laws we follow and enforce on our patrons and guests each day. I see too many law enforcement agents not wearing masks while interacting with individuals and there is no enforcement on the streets or repercussions for those who don't wear a mask. Making our job as employees of businesses who do require everyone to wear a mask to enter much more difficult. Give us this option to better serve our community by giving us the opportunity to give Bisbee citizens a safer environment to enjoy themselves in. And please have law enforcement assist us in our task of assuring that all of our following mask mandates who are who are walking around Bisbee and interacting with our beloved neighbors and friends. Sincerely, Savannah Anderson, Bisbee Social Club Manager. Greetings, Mayor and Council. I'm writing to request the granting of support from the City of Bisbee for Governor Doug Ducey's executive order easing red tape on outdoor dining, allowing restaurants to temporarily extend their premises after approval from the local governing body. This past summer, myself and three other restaurant owners met with Mayor Smith to discuss this exact topic. We spent a few hours brainstorming ideas and doing some troubleshooting of possible issues and solutions. Mayor Smith said the first step was to discuss this with Bisbee Police and Fire Departments with concerns of traffic rerouting pedestrian walkways, which areas of the sidewalks and streets for outdoor dining areas are best suited, et cetera. I'm so, so grateful to see this topic up for public discussion. Being a restaurant business owner in this town and having to navigate this worldwide situation we are currently in has been the most challenging situation, to say the least. Every one of us has been affected in many ways, but one of the hardest hit has been the service industry. The safety of my staff, guests, food and liquor vendors, local and visitors to our city is of the most important. All of the businesses I have been in are all working together to mandate masks, abide by capacity limitations, socially distancing, et cetera, to help keep everyone as safe as possible. I believe allowing for the opportunity to temporarily use outdoor spaces to provide a safer experience for us all and is vital to the survival of our small-town independent businesses. We are all in this together, so let's please help support by allowing expansion of outdoor spaces in Bisbee. We have, for the most part, all worked together as a unified force with the mask mandate. It's time to stand together and help keep our locally-owned and operated businesses alive. We are all we have. Thank you for reading this letter. Much gratitude, Carrie Blankenship, Screaming Banshee Pizza. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Now, I'm glad you had some water because it was a big one. So let's move on to general business. We'll go to accounts payable. Do I have a motion to pay accounts payable?
Yeah.
I know that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $881,847.15.
Second?
I was gonna ask if they heard.
Okay. Mr. Davis, seconded. Do we have any questions on the accounts payable? Any hands? Go ahead, Joni.
Hey, I have a few. Let's see, let me find them. So on page three, I'm just curious what training that the police officers went to, to a tune of $1,000 in hotels and for how long was it? That's the first question I have and then I have a second question on it. It's on page three. I lied, not two, page three. Oh, do I? Okay, it's under business travel? Corporate payment system?
Anybody have that answer?
I can get the answer for you, but I don't have it right now.
Okay, so I guess my second question on that is why wasn't it brought up in November instead of paying it and then bringing it to us? They had to have known that they were going to go to this training, so why didn't they take it to one of the November meetings, have it cleared, and then pay for it? You can't do that? Oh, can you not do that?
If it's under $3,000, then it doesn't require prior approval by a council. It's up to the department head to determine how to spend their budget.
Okay, just curious. Okay, number four. Page four, I mean. Barnett towing, there's a kajillion toes. What was that for? It's right at the top of the page. There's two, four, six, eight, 10, 12 toes. Do you have any idea what that's for?
They're just, yeah, they're just, I mean, they're just cars that had to be towed over the last several months.
So are we charged for that, or are we going to get reimbursed?
Yeah, usually they end up in the impound lot, and the person has to pay impound fees and administration fees to get their car back and the towing fees.
Okay, so on page six. Actually, it starts on page five. The Erie Street repairs. If I remember correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong. The statement was made that when we move to the new building, it's going to cost around $3,000 to move. So far, we're at $10,000. How much more can we expect to have to pay for this move to Erie? Cricket, yet again. Anybody have an answer?
I think when we spoke about it, the figure was anywhere from five to seven is what it was. I think that's what we spoke about. So it has gone a bit over.
And still piling up, because there's
Not necessarily still piling up a whole lot. I would not say that, Joni. This is probably the brunt of it.
Okay. So it would be nice to have a total billing when it's done. Next, page seven and pages thereafter. There's five requests for ice makers at $458 apiece. Why do we need five ice makers?
We don't need five ice makers, Ms. Giacomo. You know, what I did was I, that's an ice maker for all of our field staff that's located at the garage. So I split that amongst all of the departments within Public Works. Therefore, we are not purchasing ice anymore.
So is it one ice maker then?
Yes, ma'am.
So it would have been nice maybe to have an annotation that said that. Thank you. So the total of ice makers, how much then?
I believe it was in the, I think it was 22,000 something. I'd have to double-check that for you, but that was evenly split amongst all of the departments, so.
2290 for all five that were there.
2,290?
Yes.
Let me see. And the filing cabinet that was purchased for the building inspector, is that like one of the big four drawer ones?
Yes, it was exploding. He needed one.
Oh, no, I know, but I was just curious if it was one of the
Yeah, it's one of the big ones that you roll up to the top. Yeah.
That's why I was just curious. Let me see, those are all ice maker. I think that's it. Yep, that's it.
Well, I see anybody, any other questions? I do have one, I think for Mr. Harlow. There's a, on page two, there's a land survey for 314 O'Hare. That's a private residence. What, I just wonder why we paid for a land survey in that area?
I can answer that, Ken.
Okay.
Yeah, that has to do with the eminent domain process that was laid out for us by Leadbetter Law Firm. So in order to then proceed to get control of that property, we have to have both a survey and an appraisal of the property.
Okay, I wasn't here on the, knowing that that was part of that.
Right, right.
That's not a problem. The only other one I have, but Chief of Police isn't here, but there's a $584 for propane gas for the police department. Is that for a backup generator, or what do we use propane? I know the senior center uses the heat, but does anybody know why we're spending 600 on propane?
Yeah, that's for the radio tower. I guess, I don't know if they have a generator or something up there that they have to refill. We haven't seen that before, so maybe it's something that's just done every once in a while.
Obviously, yeah, I've never seen it, and I just was like, whoo, okay. $600 of big propane, well, not that big, is it? All right, anything else? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those to approve accounts payable, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Nay? Accounts payable, so moved. Thank you all. Now for the consent agenda. In order to help move things along and probably what I'll be doing a lot in the future is I'm not going to be reading all these out. You all have them in front of you. We all know what they are. But I'll ask you if you want any of them to be pulled. But if I can get a an indication if anybody wants one pulled, if not, then I'll take a motion to pass items A through G. Does anybody have anything on the consent agenda they would like discussed? Okay, seeing none, could I have a motion, please?
I move, we approved the consent agenda, items A through G.
Second.
Having a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as listed. Although, oh, I need a vote on this, correct?
Yes.
Or not?
Yes. Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomo?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Now on to the next, which is under listed as old business. It is the discussion of possible approval of an interagency governmental agreement with the City of Sierra Vista and the City of Bisbee for animal care services. Before I throw this open, I just, this was tabled two meetings ago. Not sure why, but under our city code, we don't necessarily follow Robert Rules of Order exactly. So what it says, it says basically this may be taken from the table at any time prior to the end of the regular, of the next regular meeting. Well, since this isn't the next regular meeting, it really is not taking from the table, but it's back before us as a regular, full-fledged agenda item. So with that said, Ms. Coleman, it's yours.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I am going to ask you to table this item, oddly enough, because there was a response to the second RFP for animal care services, and the attorney will be working to draft a formal contract that will then come back to the council at your next meeting.
That sounds good to me. Any discussion? Does anybody want to have further discussion? Then I move that we lay item number three, discussion of possible approval of the interagency government agreement with the City of Sierra Vista and the City of Bisbee for animal care services on the table and table.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Not going to read it again. So all, let's see, we need a vote on this one? Or a yea or nay? You got to help me with this a little, Ashley.
We have a vote, right? The vote, right?
To table, I think it can just be a yea or nay. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Joe.
Yeah, Mayor Budge, members of the council, for motion to table. I don't think you need a roll count, roll count vote.
All right, this is my first table, so thank you. So all those in favor to table item three, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? None. Motion passes, seven zero, so moved. On to new business. First order of business is nothing more really than an announcement that I've assigned people to some boards and commissions. It's here, it's and there will be one slight change, but everything else is fine, and I'm hoping that everybody is fine with it. But outside of that, I don't think there's any action to take on the appointments. So correct me again if I'm wrong, but I believe that's good. I'm trying to get down my my agenda here. You know, faster roller. Okay. So item number five, discussion of possible action or direction on the petition submitted by Heather Glenn regarding the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter. I do have the petition here in front of me. It's basically already done. They just wanted continued funding until a new mayor and council got seated. And that they basically, we discussed the operation of the shelter. Looks like we have a actual application to the last RFP, so I think we're pretty well settled on this. I'm going to take just a second and just let anybody that wants to, any of the council members, and just myself, I'll lead off for a second of what we think about the animal shelter and where we feel that this is how it best serves the public. And I just want, I haven't had a chance to say anything about this before in public, but I wanted to say that I cherish all the all the nonprofits and the friends that help our city. Be, without those, our city would have a very hard time to meet what we can do, whether it be the Friends of the Library, you know, Friends of the Pool, Friends of the Shelter. It goes on and on. I don't want to miss anybody, but everything from the Bisbee Foundation, the Friends of the Central School. It goes on for a very long list, and we're very blessed that we have so many residents that want to support this. So in my mind, I want to support them as much as I possibly can. And we have over 350 names here and three more sheets that were submitted tonight. So that's my comment on this. If anybody has anything else, let me know. Go ahead. I think I saw Lou's hand first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with that sentiment. I am very proud of the work that the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter does for the city. However, we're in hard times right now, and the city manager has a very difficult task ahead of her, and that is to balance our budget without a one-cent sales tax increase, which was turned down by the voters in our last election. This petition is heartwarming. However, it contains names of people who don't live within the city, and it also contains names of people by their own admission who are minors. Therefore, it's not an actionable petition, and I realize that we're not going to take any action on it tonight. But I point that out for the simple purpose of stating that there's a conflict between the city manager and between the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter, and I'd like to simplify that conflict as much as possible. The city has an obligation to take care of stray dogs. That's something between 50 and 80 animals a year. The Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter is presently operating as a rescue facility, and they take in approximately 500 animals a year. The dollar difference between those two numbers is about 17,000 for the city versus 80,000 for the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter. Personally, I would like to see us spend that $80,000 on a rescue facility, which is what the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter is presently operating as. I have no problem with that. What I have a problem with is we have no legal basis to do that. There's no contract that was properly executed to allow us to spend $80,000 to do that. I would like to see that happen, and I've expressed this feeling to the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter as well as to the city manager. My proposal is that in the interim between the time that we solve this problem and give money to the Bisbee Animal Shelter, I would like to see us have a referenda, a referendum to decide whether or not all of the taxpayers in the City of Bisbee want to support an animal rescue facility. That could be done at the next opportunity to have a referendum. In the meantime, I would support as a council member giving the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter $4,999 a month on a monthly basis until we could get this issue resolved through negotiation between the city manager, the mayor, and the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter. That's the proper way to deal with this petition and this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. Since there is a proposal that has been accepted, there will be contract negotiations, and I'm sure that will come back before us. So that's not before us tonight and something we don't want to discuss at the present. That means it happened outside of, out of this venue right now. But if a referendum is something you want to move forward on or whatever, you can have that put on for an agenda vote. I think that would be appropriate. I'm willing to talk about anything. So feel free, if you'd like that, to be put on as one of your actions for the future item on the agenda.
It's a suggestion, it's a proposal, but not formal, because you said possible action or direction, and so I'm addressing that as a possible solution.
I just want to invite you that I'm not going to be very stringent at all, if at all, about having to have two members sign something to put it on the agenda if you want something on it. For the most part, I'm all for, I just want everybody to have a chance to say whatever they want, so. And so, Joe, I saw you had something. Go ahead.
I have a statement that I would like to read. I have been very distressed about this whole situation for a very long time to a point that is really starting to affect my health. So I'm going to read this statement to you now. I should have read it earlier. I want to start by quoting an email that was sent to me by a constituent that really summed up my feelings about the debacle that took place during the renewal of the Friends of the Animal Shelter contract. The email started, "I'm writing you today because I'm saddened and terribly confused about what is happening with this shelter here in Bisbee. I've researched the issue, and I keep coming up short in trying to find an answer that at all satisfies or explains what is going on here." So how did we get to this juncture? How did this end up with so much hatred in misinformation and turmoil that didn't have to happen? When I have seen, heard, and researched, it started with an email on June 11th, not by a meeting or a call. There had not been any personal meetings or calls with the city manager that I'm aware of, and I have researched and talked to a number of people. There's only been emails. When the Friends of the Animal Shelter asked by email about the contract being renewed, the city manager responded with the month-to-month payments until the city could determine the impact of COVID. At that point, the Friends' leadership emailed the mayor that they didn't know what they did to piss off the city manager, but they wouldn't work with her until they could have a civil exchange. The city manager was accused of not taking their calls. There has only been one call from the shelter leadership, and that was about a missed meeting, which was answered. The Friends decided to play it out on the social media, excuse me, I've got something happening here with my computer. Okay. The Friends decided to play it out on social media, causing a lot of misunderstanding. Many people at Bisbee are blaming the city manager for not reaching out. No, wait a minute. The shelter is asking for money. Why would the city manager, what did you want him to do? Beg them to take the money? This is pursuant This is pursuant on the Friends to be able to to cooperate with the city manager. Another complaint was the city manager has never visited the shelter operated by the city. Well, that's because it isn't operated by the city. It's operated by the Friends, and they are a 501(c)(3). The money that is funded from that the city funds are for city or animals that are picked up by staff or surrendered by people, the residents of Bisbee. There has been so much misinformation in this situation that could have been avoided if the Friends had just worked with the city manager. And I'm not talking about the volunteers or the paid employees that run the shelter. They've been wonderful. They've been doing a great job. But people have been very misled as to what has taken place. And for those of you who think I don't understand about animals, I've lived here for nineteen years. I was not able to have dogs because of my job in the Air Force. I was away way too much from recent heal, but I could really adequately have a dog, a dog. So I didn't have a dog until I I got to Bisbee. I've had, I have rescued five dogs, and I have rescued four cats, and I brought two rescue cats with me. So I I'm not a stranger to the shelter. I support it. However, it has to be done correctly. This isn't a hit job on anyone, but people at Bisbee need to know that the Friends are not a victim in this fiasco. They didn't want to cooperate with the city manager and instead went to the mayor and then the city, the city attorney, which the the city manager did authorize expenditure of funds so that they could get advice. When the Friends had questions on letters and emails from the city manager manager, instead of asking the city manager, they addressed the questions to the council and let the city manager out of the loop. The second problem was the RFP, which 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 was required, but was not was not done with the initial contract in two thousand and sixteen. Yeah, the city city really made a big mistake on that, and it's fortunate that it has been corrected because if it hadn't been, we could have been sued in a number of different ways. The Friends were informed the email by this informed of this by email on September thirtieth, when it was discovered, and they even asked questions about some of the requirements, which were answered as much as possible without giving the bitter undue bitter undue advantage. The RFP did contain the minimum requirements, which are items that are needed to be answered, or or the proposal could not be accepted by the city. The proposal submitted by the Friends did not respond to the minimal requirements. They were even given a second opportunity to resubmit the proposal with the information. They did not comply. Instead, they told the city manager an email. The reason was the work involved with accounting and billing would be on what we can do as volunteers, and we couldn't have enough, we didn't don't have enough staffing at the the shelter to cover that either. My question is, is how are you accounting for the Bisbee animals? Surely, the information had to be there in records or data or the database, bookkeeping, accounting, and with all the supporters that the the animal shelter has, I really cannot believe that there wasn't anybody that was there that could have helped them out with this situation if they were asked. The last thing is how did the idea of the animal shelter would return to a kill shelter in the city and that the city was closing the animal shelter? Where did that come from? Neither is any part of this situation, but here we are.
Okay, thank you for that. That's what I really wanted is to hear from everybody. Anybody else would like to speak? Okay, I saw Joni's hand first, so you're next. Thank you. Oh, you're muted.
You'd think after doing Zoom twenty-four seven, I'd have it down. Um, so, once we get down to the brass tacks of it all, and we really look at what we need for the city, I think there's some core things that we need to address: animal intake, animal husbandry, and animal service programs. We get more than eighty animals. What's going to happen is if we don't address those animals that are abandoned, not just the ones that the ACO picked up, but those that people are not going to have any place to take, they're going to end up dumping them like they have before in the past. We're going to find ourselves overrun if we do not account for those. And whether we like it or not, there is a large amount of those animals. I personally want to continue seeing services offered. I utilize their services as far as those discount services like spay and neuter regularly. These are things I feel that our community needs, and we have a community of people that rely on those services because they don't make a lot of money, and the shelter works with them. So those are things that I want to see continued. I would like to see, you know, an expansion of services. I don't, I personally don't have an issue with taking animals from other shelters in a collaborative effect, because sometimes we're going to find ourselves in a situation where somebody dumps a load of animals on us, be it for court order or for some other reason, and we may not have the places to to store it. So that's something else I think that needs to be addressed. And I guess I'm going to say one last thing, and I'll leave it at that for future discussion, but communication and cooperation is a two-way street and which is interpreted differently by all. So I think one of the things that we all need to work on is a better communication and better collaboration.
Thank you. And that's what I'm hoping to produce here is is better communications and and good discussion, and I think it helps us all. I'm going to go to Hannah just for a sec second, because she had her hand up, and then I'll come back to you, Joan. Thank you.
Okay. Hear me over.
Kind of.
Can you hear me, Ken?
Okay, you'll have to yell.
Okay, I'm trying to use her mic. I agree with what you have said and what Councilmember Giacominio has said. And I think our our shelter does an outstanding job, but I do want to respond to Mr. Pollock. And in looking over the petition, there was a very small handful of out-of-town signatures. And on the ones that, you know, he he mentioned that there were juveniles or underage, you know, kids that had signed it, there are students that go and help walk the animals. So if they're there volunteering and helping out, then I think by George, they should be able to sign a petition should they choose. I mean, this is they're very passionate about helping and their animals. And so I think you know, I I think it's a good thing that they've signed. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Paul Chen. Joan, go ahead. Thank you.
I just wanted to bring up one other point. People don't understand. Maybe and maybe I'm wrong. Maybe they do understand and just, you know, don't care, but the shelter, the the Friends of the of the Bisbee Animal Shelter are a 501(c)(3). They have been raising anywhere from a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars as a 501(c)(3). The city is not paying for the entire animal shelter. And I think people are getting very confused by that fact, and that because that's the only way I can I can think that, oh, well, you know, the shelter is going to be closed down. This is only part of the funding that they get. And it is for the animals that are brought in. And and I have no objection to changing that with a referendum, but this is what we have right now. And I just want people to understand, it is not the city that doesn't want the shelter. It just, it is, it has distressed me for months now, and I am just, I I want to get the the truth out there to people that this is a situation where it is run by the shelter or run by the the Friends, but they're also a 501(c)(3), and they have funding that they can also get other other places. It's not contingent on just the city. Thank you.
Sure. Just before we go back, anybody, Leslie, do you have anything or Frank? I'll get back to you, Lou. Thanks. I just want to let them go ahead first.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I agree with Joni and Anna. There isn't a lot about the shelter that I would like to see change. I don't know at this point if a referendum is necessary, because I don't know this offhand, but don't those cost money? I mean, we've got to print ballots. We've got to, you know, go out there, and that seems like it seems like the people have spoken. I mean, they held a rally and three hundred people showed up to Grassy Park in a pandemic. We've got a petition sitting in front of us with all these signatures. And I feel like it's been pretty obvious what the public wants to me anyway. And but anyway, I'd like to see all the services that Joni mentioned, animal husbandry, adoption programs, fostering programs, a volunteer program, all the programs that are already in place at the shelter. And I would like to see, I know that, you know, we need to cooperate with other shelters sometimes to get animals where they need to go, but I would like it to see the shelter used primarily for animals in Bisbee that are being surrendered out of Bisbee or that have been found in Bisbee, you know, just for Bisbee animals. But those are my thoughts on the matter. I would like the shelter to stay as much the same as possible, and I know that they do fundraise on their own, but I understand that the money they get from the city is a huge chunk of their budget, and that's what enables them to maintain a stable payroll, and that's the most important thing, isn't it, to have workers in there who they can guarantee they're going to pay and are going to be there every single day to maintain consistency for these animals? So anyway, that's all I have to say about it, Ken.
Thank you very much. Frank, you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, yes, I agree. I think it's obvious that the majority of the animal owners in Bisbee want to see more than just basic services at the shelter. So I would concur with all the other comments that we've had. I think it boils down to, though, we need to have a proposal submitted and which hasn't to this point happened. I guess it has now. I have this news to make, but that that's a good thing. So I think we could, we we want to see services. We need to have proposals. And hopefully, we're going to have one that we can work with.
Great. And back to you, Lou, and we'll tie this up.
Leslie, I agree with everything that you said, and I'd like to see this this rescue facility, which is a regional rescue facility as it's operating right now. I'd like to see it continue. But the point is, the taxpayers of Bisbee, the city of Bisbee, have a right to make that determination, which has not been done. That's why a referendum would give this legitimacy. If we want to spend eighty thousand dollars a year on a rescue facility, we need to have the support of the citizens of Bisbee. And I would like to see that referendum take place. In the meantime, I'm willing, as a councilperson, to approve a limited budget to continue on a monthly basis for the animal shelter to operate with city funds in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars until the city manager, the mayor, and the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter can sit down and negotiate a compromise solution to this dilemma. And that's not going to happen until until those folks get together and make this happen. Now, the fact that the Bisbee Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter have submitted a proposal that is considered responsive gives the city and the mayor and the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter an opportunity now to negotiate. They didn't have that before because there was not a legitimate contract. This gives them a legitimate contract or will give them a legitimate contract, and we can move forward from that point on. In the meantime, let's fund the animal shelter at the agreed-upon amount, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars a month on a monthly basis, assuming that negotiations go forward in a good-faith manner to resolve this issue. That's the best way to deal with this problem right now. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. And that is one of our items in the future coming on towards us as the continue keeping this vital service still in in with its legs underneath. It's why we work this out. And I think our our city attorney will enter into this contract situation, and hopefully, we'll have something to you know, we have three weeks now until we come back on in I think it's January fifth. Maybe we'll have something before us then. I hope we will. I think this is a good chance of the public's heard from their elected officials. I'm not here to debate a referendum because it's not before us right now, but I I would be glad to if you want to put that on as an item. I've always felt that that we, as the representatives of the of the community, speak for the community unless it's something like raising, you know, their their sales tax or such, that that takes a real vote. But is there something, okay, quickly, so we can move on, Joan, that would be great.
I just have a question of Frank. When you were talking about being a rescue shelter, are you talking about the city funding the entire thing or just a portion of it as they are now? Because they can be a rescue shelter with a 501(c). I mean, they can do everything that they, you know, if all of these things that we're talking about under their 501(c).
If I might, I think that what we will see what comes before us as a negotiated contract, and at that point, we'll see where everybody is on this and we'll have a, we could have a good debate at that point and see if that's, I think that question would probably get answered at that point. It's kind of cart before the horse right now till we get something. I don't know, Joan. I don't have the answer.
Yeah, well, I'm just, you know, because I think people are getting, or I'm getting confused about the fact that, you know, a portion of it goes for this thing, and and as a 501(c), they can be doing all of these things. I mean.
So I'm hoping in the contract, yeah, you're absolutely right. Now, I'm hoping in the contract, they'll be spelled out very, very clearly. But like I said, we're not here to debate the contract or the but but I thought it was important with this, this, oh, and I'll let Joe finish up for us, but I thought it was important that the that the the community hear from us, because just like you said, Joan, it's they need, the more information they have, the better this is. It's a, it's been a very to say the least, emotional issue, and I think as we as the as a as a new council, a new year, we can, we can move forward on this, and I'm I'm really hopeful for that. So Joe, are you have something just quickly to?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, members of council, thank you. Just, I I appreciate the the comments, because as as the mayor mentioned, we do have a response to the RFP. But I also want to kind of help try to clarify some of the situation. And, you know, I've got some fresh eyes on this, and I'm I'm looking at some things that have happened, and and I understand the the emotions run high and and things. So there's a, there's a few things as we go forward, looking at negotiating a contract in connection with the RFP and as tied to this specific agenda item as to the the Friends of the Shelter and how the council sees that going forward. A couple of things is, you know, the the city puts out an RFP for services that are required pursuant to city code. We have a city code section, chapter six, with regard to animals. And there are certain duties and obligations that the city has pursuant to city code. And I, what I'm hearing from some of the members of council, you know, is different from what's in the current city code as to what the requirements are. And I think maybe a discussion with the with the council on a work session or another agenda item specific as to discussions as to moving forward with a possible amendment to the city code, and that would also kind of help address some of Councilmember Pollock's concerns with regard to, you know, a referendum, because a code amendment is done by ordinance, which gets adopted, and then there's an opportunity, a thirty Because a code amendment is done by ordinance which gets adopted. And then there's an opportunity, a 30-day opportunity for anybody who wants to file for a, for a referendum on that code amendment to do so. So there, and there are certain things in the code that, you know, are, are kind of hard to, kind of hard to, to negotiate, given the current situation. Because for example, and this is just one of the examples that I have, under 6.27 disposition of animals, it, the code specifically says, "Any dog or other animal not redeemed or purchased shall be destroyed." Shall is a very specific legal term. So, you know, and from what I'm hearing and, you know, the, the council wants to have a, a, an organization or something that is able to not be a, to be a no-kill shelter, to be able to help those animals. But that kind of conflicts with the current code, which we can address. We can, we can, we can sit down and go through those things. The, the other, you know, aspect of this negotiation and stuff is that the city owns the shelter where the, the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter currently operate. So in addition to the, the financial funding that they receive through any contract, they're also receiving the, the benefits of the property, a vehicle, I believe, is involved. So different things like that to take into consideration when we look at, you know, the contract and the RFP and stuff. But just so everybody understands, you know, typically when an RFP is issued, it's issued based off of looking, okay, this is what the city code provides for. These are, are mandatory services that the city has to provide that are under the code. And so we're trying to, you know, issue an RFP or negotiate a contract that complies with the current, current code. And that's not to say that council can't go and make amendments to that code to update it and address it. Codes are constantly updated and amended because aspects change. So, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to hopefully try to clarify some of the, the situation.
Thank you. I guess my last little comment would be that, that, you know, changing the code, I think really is something we need to look at, not only in that way, but also the overall animal control code and how we deal with, with everything from chickens to horses to everything else. And that's going to take some time, but I would like to, you know, move forward a bit on this. And then, and then we will definitely start tackling the other part. If we put that back, we may, I, we might be behind for, it could take us some time to completely redo, redo a code. But, but it wouldn't, we, we're not looking at a five-year contract like some things where we would, whatever it is you, you can bring to us. That would be good. But I, I like, I like your comments about moving forward on addressing our code and, and where we're at. So, Ms. Hanson, one more.
We have an animal, a animal ordinance that was not passed, that is, that can be tweaked. Lou did a heck of a lot of, of work on it with the shelter and it wasn't passed. So we have, we already have a starting point. We've tried to pass it three times and we could not get it passed. So.
I've been watching.
Something to work with.
So I've been watching that and I know that's going to be another leap in the tape. And I'm hoping we can get there. So that would be my, so I'm going to ask the clerk to just file this petition if you would. And, and at that point, we can move on to item number seven. And if everybody's good on that, we'll move forward from that.
Item six.
Oh, are we on six? Yep, we are. Excuse me. I zipped down one too many. There we, thank you. Discussion of possible approval to extend a waiver of fire inspection fees for commercial inspection scheduled through the timeframe that the mayor and council decides. This is from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We also do have Jim Richardson on the, on the call, Zoom call. So I think Jim will address this with you. Just a reminder that the mayor and council did allow for a period, I believe through the end of October of this year, where no fire inspection fees would be charged in order to do the most important work. And that was actually getting inspections done. And now Jim has some further insight into what's happening on the ground now that he's been out there. So I'm going to let him step in at this point if he's still available.
Okay. Jim, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I think it's more important to, to get these inspections done, completed. And I know for a fact that it's costing a lot of money to, to do the upgrades that the, the code calls for. Up to this point, I've done about 65 annual inspections. And, you know, most of these businesses haven't been inspected in, in many years. And there's, there's quite a few code violations. So I'd rather them spend that money that we would be charging them on upgrades to their electrical systems, their emergency exit signs and just everything that needs to be done. So we've actually got 20, I've done 20 new businesses this year, which is kind of surprising due to the pandemic. But it's, that's good news. So, I mean. But anyway, that, that's my recommendation is to extend the, the waiver for as long as you guys see fit. Like I said, I think it's more important that the businesses are fire safe. The prevention part of it is, you know, life safety and, and building safety. So that would be my recommendation to you guys. I'd be glad to answer any questions if I can.
Hey, Ms. Klein.
You're muted.
There, got it.
Okay. Sorry about that. I thought she unmuted. Hi, Jimmy. So how many businesses did you say you've inspected?
I've done more than 80, but I've done about 40 of the higher risk businesses. I'm talking restaurants, hotels, the, the bigger life risk places. I'm, I'm concentrating on prioritizing those businesses first. Like I said, restaurants and hotels are the biggest risk in my eyes. Then I'm going to start working my way down through all the other ones. But, yeah, so I've done 80 plus total in, in the time that I've been in this position. And I, we've had, like I said, 20 new business applications. And that doesn't count all the follow-ups that I have to go back multiple times to make sure they've finished or completed what I've, it's, you know, a couple of hundred probably is many times I've been out there, but some of them are the same business two or three times. So.
Okay. And so now that you're actively doing these inspections, can I request, Mr. Mayor, that we get like a monthly statement of businesses? That's what they did back in the old days. They used to do, prevent mayor and council with, you know, the businesses and, and all of that, the inspections. Just kind of so we have an idea of, you know, those that are in compliance or those that you're working with to get in compliance. But it just kind of keeps us updated. Is there any way that we can do that maybe on a monthly or quarterly basis?
I, I would support a quarterly basis. I, I did a lot of inspections myself back in the day. And sometimes you have to give them two or three weeks to, to, before you go back. And then there's like one more thing that didn't quite get done. But so, you know, I, I don't see any problem with that. If Jim could provide something that could easily be disseminated to the, to the entire council at least four times a year. And I think that would give us a good update on, on where we are and how, how things are going. Does that sound okay with you, Jim?
Yeah, absolutely. That's not a problem. But like you said, it does take a while. I am being a little more lenient because some of these businesses are, they have a lot to do. And I've had a few of them out there for, you know, for months that are still working. The electricians have been busy and they're hard to get scheduled. You know, it's, it's taken time. And, and because of the pandemic and it's the first time they've had to do an annual inspection, I am being more lenient than I, than I normally would have been, giving them more time. Just because the, like I said, the electricians are getting hit hard and, and it's costing a lot of money. And it, they're waiting. So that seems to be the biggest holdup.
They're making an effort. That's the part, if they just ignore you, and that's a different situation.
Yes.
What else?
Yeah, if you guys, if you would, um, write down specifically what you would like to know quarterly, then I can start putting something together specific to what you, what you'd like to know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. If you pass that on to the clerk, then she can get that over and, and we can move forward from there. Do we have any more discussion on item six? Yes, Lou, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think the issue here is do we want to extend this? And through what period do we want to extend waiver of the fire inspection fees? I don't want to micromanage the fire marshal or the fire department. I think they do a fine job and they know what they're doing. And it's not in my agenda to question them. However, I think that waiver of these fees is important. And I would suggest that we waive them through the end of the fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments on length of time? I do know that we had $50,000, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong. Teresa, but I think that was what was in there for revenue that we'd be giving up, at least part of that anyway. But who, when the budget was made, we didn't know there was going to be a pandemic and the businesses were going to be hit this hard. So I think that was 50,000. Any other? Buddy else having? All right. Well, then Lou, I'd like you to make a motion for, for that time period. I would support that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to first ask the city manager if she feels that's reasonable. Ms. Coleman?
Yes, thank you. I had to unmute myself. Thanks. Thanks, Lou. I have had this discussion with Jim Richardson and I would have to agree with him. The potential cost of a fire will way outweigh the prevent, the cost of giving up the income on these preventative inspections.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready. I'll, I'll move to extend the waiver of fire inspection fees for commercial inspections scheduled through, and I believe the end of the fiscal year will be June 30th.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Five seconds.
Five seconds.
Well, one of you, Ashley, you got one of those seconds, I hope. All right.
Councilmember Hanson.
We have a motion and a second to waive, to extend the waiver of fire inspection fees for commercial inspections scheduled through the end of the fiscal year or June 30th, which will be June 30th. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. And any opposed, nay? Motion passions unanimously, seven zero, so moved. Now we're on to number seven. This is a discussion of possible approval of a new 60-month lease agreement between Bisbee Police Department and Roca USA Inc. in two new upgrade intelligence series copy fax to replace the current obsolete leased copy fax machines. And the chief's not here. Are you, Ms. Coleman, you got to handle that?
Well, I'm going to lean on Ashley. Is that okay, Ashley?
Um, sure.
With this discussion.
You know that the police department has been using RICO for a few years now. They have a lease just as we do for our, our machines. And this does include the cost, the cost of toners and any sort of maintenance that they do need. I did look over their price quote and they are getting quite savings over the last year. Unfortunately, I don't have those figures in front of me. I'm sorry. I wasn't aware I was going to be speaking to this. That's okay. But, but there is, is a savings that they are going to be seeing over the, the year.
I think it's the $388 is there.
And that's for, and it is for two machines.
Discussion. We have a, but it has a discussion on this.
I was like, it makes sense, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. One question for, for our city manager. There was brought up that since this was just on a, this was on a state contract, so we didn't have to go out to bid locally. I think that was the, that's the case.
Discussion. Yeah, that's often the case. Yeah.
They are under state contract.
Right. So with that, that's why it wasn't a competitive bidding, though. It would be $12,000.
It was, it was already competitively bid on the state contract.
Right, correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's, oh, this, yeah, Joni, go ahead.
I have a question. So at the end of 60 months, what happens?
Um, they can, they have the choice to either upgrade their machines once again and sign a new lease or keep these machines.
So they chose not to do the last upgrade? I mean, not?
Correct. The machines that they have right now are pretty old.
So at the end of 60 months, then what is the grand total of that machine going to be?
Let me look through. No, it's okay. I'm just, unfortunately, I was not prepared.
So it'd be 60 times the 200?
12,600 or 300.
Right. And I don't know if there's any additional that they have to pay, but yeah, that, that would be the monthly.
Monthly is two.
Multiplied by the 60.
Two machines.
For two machines, two set. They keep one in dispatch and I think they have one in their admin side.
Keep them in ours. So, yeah.
Unfortunately, we still live somewhat in a paper world. I wish we didn't, but especially when you start doing court cases and stuff, I think. Anyway, anyone else? Any other discussion? Okay, saying that, I'll call for a motion. Somebody could? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve a new 60-month lease agreement between Bisbee Police Department and the RICO USA Inc. For two new upgraded intelligence series copper fax to replace current obsolete leased copy of fax machines.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for agenda item seven. I'm thinking just already know, I'm not going to reread it again. So, so we can move along. I'm just going to call. I'm just gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of item number seven. Say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose? Saying none? Motion passes seven zero, unanimous, so moved. So item eight. Discussion of possible approval of instructions. Now this, I'm, since this was put on by me last Wednesday, before I knew we had a proposal that met the RFP. I'm just going to, I was gonna pull this, but instead I just wanted to make a comment why we weren't gonna consider it. So just say, pull it. So I just wanted to make sure the public knew that we do have a, a, a proposal in front, from the RFP. And so this would not need to be addressed this evening. So I'm just gonna move on from this point. It'll be, basically be pulled from needing to be discussed. So, thank you. Item number nine. Discussion of possible approval of an additional one month funding with Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter for the month of January twenty twenty-one in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars to allow for review and consideration of all submitted proposals for the RFP contract as directed or for animal care services. Again, this was made up in last Wednesday. I think this is what Lou suggested, and I, I support it also. I would make, I'll make the motion, but I would include on that, that it will be funded for the month of January or up to a, a signed contract. After that point, it would, the contract would come into effect. Okay, open it for discussion. Any discuss, wanna say something?
So then this, this would be amended to say that it will, if it was to pass, it would be up till a contract is signed?
Correct.
Is that what you were?
Yeah. So I'll make the motion and then we can discuss it. I move to approve an additional one month funding for the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter for the month of January twenty twenty-one in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars or until a signed contract is achieved.
Second.
Second, yes.
Is there any further discussion? Saying none. I'll, yeah, do we have a voter or just a yea or nay, Ashley? Sorry. This is a funding issue.
It isn't a contract, but it is a funding issue. I mean, it's always better to be safe than sorry, I guess.
Call for a vote, or not.
Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes seven, I'm sorry, six one. So moved. Item ten is one more item I put on the agenda. I wanted to have this discussion before, instead of just bringing something before the council. It's basically, if you look at the backup material, it's I'll tell you why I wanted to do this. For my seven years on council, at least when we had normal meetings where people actually showed up or we were on Channel Five, it just seemed like so many, so much of the time, by the time we got to council comments, most people had signed off or left the room. And I just thought it was very important for, for you as council members to be heard and sooner than that. And of course, it would be agenda sized just like it is now. But that it would come after the call of the public. So if you have an announcement about a, a, a ward meeting or some other point that you want to bring up about your ward or the city, that it would be heard earlier on, when I think right after the public gets their chance, that I think you should have your chance. So that's why I'm suggesting that we move council comments right after item six, which is called the public. It's, this is kind of a two-phase situation. The other thing I, I felt that I would like to, for you all to consider and talk about is I really feel that our boards and commissions are super important to this, to this city. I mean, we have a lot of them and they, people put a lot of their time and effort into, into participating in those and telling us what's going on. But again, when I was there, I always felt, I knew exactly what was, was going on with the boards and commissions I was assigned to. But I never, never really knew what was being discussed at, at the Airport Commission or the Disability Committee or, or even Parks and Rec until an item actually came before the entire council. And I didn't know they were considering this or that. So being that we've all, most of these meetings are, are once a quarter. That would only be four times a year for most all of them, except for three that, that do meet monthly. That if you're assigned to a board and commission, that at the very end of the meeting, this is mainly to, to, to pass between members a quick synopsis of what happened in your, in your meeting with, with the public. So that if Parks and Recs are thinking about, you know, putting a kiosk over here, or somebody's airport wants to, to inform the council there, they would like to move forward with, with oiling the runway or whatever it may be. That way we would have it up. And also that, that I think the people that are on those boards and commissions would feel that they're being heard and that by everyone, and that we're all kind of on the same ticket. So it's just, I'm good with it, you know, either way, I, it's just something that I always have felt. And since I made mayor, I thought I'd bring it up. So I'm gonna throw it open. And if there's a consensus, then I would, I would ask the administration to, to start drawing up a, an ordinance to change this. So I'm throwing it open for discussion now. Please, somebody let me know if you think this is a good idea or a bad idea. Lou, thank you.
I think it's a, with qualifications, I think it's a good idea. I've always felt that the city council members have an opportunity to speak before the public, not at the end of the meeting, but near the front of the meeting after the call to the public. And where, my qualification is this. As council members, we're also citizens of the city of Bisbee. We are members of the public. We have the right to sign up on the signup sheet to discuss any item, just as any member of the public does. We have that right right now. I was going to exercise that, right? There were a couple of times when I was not happy with the fact that I had to wait till the end of the meeting. And I, I was actually going to sign up on the signup sheet and see if I could speak as a member of the public and probably create a whole bunch of conflict at that meeting, but that didn't happen. But we can do that. So I don't see the need to move council comments up to right after the call to the public. Let the council members, all of us, participate in call to the public if we wish to do that. Then we can keep our, our council comment period at the end of the meeting, which has no time restriction. And that gives us two opportunities to speak if we want to. So basically, one of the things, I see no reason to move this up. We already have that right to do that.
Um, I'm gonna ask our city attorney. I think there's an open meeting law situation about allowing council members to speak on any subject of the call of the public.
We would just be stopped from speaking until that item came up on the agenda, just like anybody else would.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Pollock and members of the council. If it's an agendized item, you have the ability to talk about it at, at the time of the agenda. The issue with the call to the public is technically, the call to the public is a technical violation of the open meeting law in general. Because you're, you're having items brought before council that have not been agendized. And so the way that the, the Attorney General's Office and lawyers have gotten around that technical violation is to say, okay, you can have a call to the public, but during that call to the public, the council cannot address or respond to any of those items that have been raised by the public, the council. And, and the difference being, Councilmember Pollock, is that you are a member of the, of the council. You're sitting in a, in a formal agendized public meeting. So there, there are, although you are a member of the community and technically a member of the public, there are additional restrictions that are placed on council members because of the open meeting law requirements. And that's why the, the, the law is, is that you, you, you may, you're allowed to have a call to the public. You're not required to have a call to the public, but you're allowed to have a call to the public. But if you do so, the restriction is, is that you cannot respond or address or engage any of the comments that are made in the call to the public with one limited exception with regard to criticism, personal criticism. You can, you can, you can address those. So that's, that's the concern with, you know, with, with the call of the public, you know. Mr. Mayor, with regard to the, 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 the agenda item and something. One thing that I would, and because of that issue with the call of the public, and, and my concern is that if you put council, council member comments immediately following the call of the public, there may be a, a a, a slip or a, a desire in, in one of the council member comments to try to address something that was raised up in the call to the public. To maybe put council comments right after announcements and right before call to the public. So it's still, it's still up, i- i- at the head of the meeting where you have more participation. But you don't have that potential slippery slope where somebody says something in their council a presentation or, or or item that somebody alleges ties back into something somebody raised in the call to the public. And then you are looking at an open meeting law violation. It gets submitted to the AG's office. They send a letter. Then I have to respond to the letter.
You know, we don't wanna go there.
No.
Mr. Mayor, may I follow up with a question?
Sure, you bet.
I, I was hoping you would say that. And I agree with you completely. And that's why I think that the council comments should remain at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. I, I wanted the public to speak first, so it didn't seem like we were more important than them. But somehow the mayor gets to make his comments right off the get-go. And I don't know why, how that, and I don't even have to agenda size it. So it's all kind of strange to me. But anyway, that's, that's who else? What about, really quickly, Lou, why, you have it just for a second, and I'll, and I'll come to you, Anna. What about reports from committees? What's your feeling on that? Lou, would you wanna, you wanna address that now or not?
My feeling on committees is, I'm happy to, I agree with you. It should be more information is better than no information. So however, the committees submit action items to the council. And items are our way, our, our way, the committee's way of getting that information to the public. And we vote on it, yea or nay. That's really a good way to do that. I don't object to taking the extra time to give reports on what happened at committee meetings. But I'm not sure that it's going to be that beneficial.
Anna, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of moving our comments up just because a lot of people tune out at the end of the meeting. So I do like Mr. Estes's suggestion of, like, after you make your comments, then rest of the council, if they have comments agendized, we can make them then. I, I do have the idea.
Okay. Joan, hi. Go ahead, Joan.
I agree with, with Lou, except for one exception. I, I have used my comments to provide information on things of interest or, you know, that aren't the mundane. And I do that when it's necessary. I don't think we need to have it scheduled. I think that the, the council members need to take that responsibility. I know when I was on Streets and Infrastructure and we were going through all of this paving, I tried to get out as much information as I could about what was going on. Unfortunately, it was a moving target. But I don't think that having a set time, I think that that should be the responsibility of that committee member or liaison to, to provide that information. Plus, you also have the tapings of, of all the committees. But I think that we need to take that individual responsibility. That when something important, important, uh, important comes up, that you speak about it or you do it through your comments.
Okay, thank you. Someone else? I need kind of a direction here, so I know whether we want to move forward on it.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Leslie had her hand up, and I'll come back to you, Frank. Go ahead, Leslie.
I like the idea of moving the comments, you know, sooner in the meeting. I feel like nobody's left by the time we get to them. And I like the idea of having an assigned time when we report on our boards and committees, what they're doing. That's pretty much all I have to say about it.
Okay, Frank.
Well, I was, I, I was thinking more along the lines of Joan, that we didn't need assigned times that when we had some, something to say, we could, at the proper time.
I can see what Joe's saying, that if we put it after Paul, call the public, even though it's agenda sized, what, what the council wants to say, it could get off base. So maybe, you know, it would, would be more, make more sense to make those comments. And then there's nothing that would interfere afterwards. I could understand that. But okay, Joni, what would you think?
I agree with what Mr. Estes says. And I do think it would be nice to have a report if that liaison feels that it's necessary. Because there's sometimes things that are discussed that don't necessarily get out to the public or get back to the council. So, you know, it's, that could be up to the liaison, council liaison, but I do that it could be moved for, what do you call it, call to the public? Does that make sense?
I think I heard most of that.
Okay, I'll try again. Yes, I froze. I don't realize it. No, I agree with moving up. Oh, well, can you hear me now? Hmm, okay.
Joe, what, what do you, what's your good suggestion here?
I think I kinda, I understood what Councilmember Giacominio was, was saying. You know, I think also it's important to remember that you don't have to make comments if you don't have any comments to make. But in order to make comments, you have to have an, an agenda item there as a placeholder to be able to do it. And I would also encourage that if the, the mayor and council go that, that route to, to move that up or to put it that i- if you do have something that you know is coming up, that you're able to get that to the clerk. So at least a topic is able to be put on to the, the, the comment section that, you know, Councilmember Hanson is going to give a report on this committee or, or something like that. If it's something that you know ahead of time. Just so that, you know, so that there aren't any issues with the open meeting law. So you don't have you know, because a lot of times, if you are given a report, there's always that, that, you know, the concern or, or the the desire to say, oh, I want more, more information. I want to ask a question. But it's not really an agenda item for discussion. It's an agenda item for information.
Right. Well, we have been our city clerk has been putting council comments at the end, even though we don't have an agenda item on the, on the our code. even though we don't have an agenda item on the, on the, our code. And then that is required that they say, oh, well, this is to, you know, announce a word meeting or whatever, that's, that we have been doing that as a normal basis. And I would, you know, definitely have to, we'd want to continue that. So what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I think that it makes sense that if you have something to say, and very often we don't have council comments, but we may have one or two. And I just think that to be heard early on is as important as hearing what the mayor may have for comments. As far as the boards and commissions go, I think we could have an item down there, but I would leave it to you as the liaisons to those boards to decide if you needed to bring something to us that came out of a meeting you thought would be important for all council members to know. I mean, I think that that is discretion that would be, could be used. Yes, I, you know, I attended my cemetery committee and nothing of any substance needs to, would be coming before council. You know, something, we wouldn't need to worry about that. It wouldn't take a lot of time. It's just if things are being discussed by our public that I want to know what they're saying. And somebody told me, well, you can, you can watch them all on the Zoom or on the, and I just said, well, that's like 18 hours a month. There's 18 boards and commissions. It would take a long time to watch every one of them. But if I could get a quick synopsis from the members that are attending them, that would be great. So I'll work on this. I don't want to spend the money to drop a code right away, but I just wanted to get the feelings from everybody on how they might feel. And then I'll bring something back just to massage a little bit and see if we can, see if we can agree on it. So that's all. It was, it was just a discussion tonight and not, not any formal action. So anyway, I appreciate your time on that and your comments. It's just something that's always kind of bothered me from the seven years I was there and just thought it would be something I would like to talk to you all about. So, all right, let's move on, see if we can get through this. Now, I see the agenda item number 11. This would be the one that we had so many letters on, the discussion and possible approval of a temporary premise extension permit application for business establishments. Ms. Coleman, you got this all drawn up, I think, by our attorney. You want to present?
Yes, 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 thank you, Mayor. But a city attorney does get credit for being right on top of this particular issue and also our restaurants and other liquor licensees as well. So this is not limited to just restaurants. It would be any liquor licensee could potentially expand their premises up to 60 feet from their establishment. Ideally, I think, as we heard in the letters, that would include parking spaces. There should probably be some discussion about how many parking places per establishment, something to that effect. And then for the motion, you might also consider administrative approval of the permit applications.
Yes, thank you. I know I've been contacted by a couple of businesses and I guess there is some grant money out there, or you want to call it grant money, money from the state. And so if we go weeks on end to approve their permit, then they may miss out on the ability to get some money to be able to set these things up. So I'll agree with you, allowing some sort of, you know, order or approval from administration. My biggest concern would be, of course, safety. They will be providing some sort of protection for their patrons. They would have to include us on their insurance and also sign a waiver. I think that's all part of it. And that, you know, that they would have to check with their insurance companies on that and take that responsibility. So I'm hoping for discussion. Anybody have discussion about this? Go ahead, Lou, thanks.
I agree wholeheartedly. I think it's a good move to do this. However, there's a letter attached from the, from the businesses in question. And they request that the city provides bollards for safety after approval of extensions by the city and DLLC. I don't see it as a good idea to mix dining patrons with traffic. And bollards are not going to protect them from traffic if we're going to allow cars to go up and down the street while they're using parking spaces for outdoor dining. That's my one concern about this issue. Thank you.
Quickly to help you address that, well, we won't provide bollards or any other because then we would become liable for it.
Right.
I heard, and I think he agrees with me on that one. So it would be totally up to them. As far as, I know, mixing traffic and this, you know, mainly this will be, you know, Bisbee, it's going to be very hard to separate those in many locations. But anyway, more comments. How's you feel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Frank, go ahead.
I think it's important to support our businesses. They are struggling at this point, and I think this is a good alternative for them. And there's been times when we've closed down Subway Street to allow such things. I think that's something that we need to explore further. I've talked with people on Subway. They're interested in doing that, you know, again, temporarily from time to time. So I think, I think this is a good, good thing to set up. And I think it should be set up with administrative approval.
Go ahead, Joni.
I agree with them, even including Commerce Street, because those buildings open up to the backside of that, whereas the opposite side of the street opens up to Subway. And kind of make it, not to be cliche, as Europeanish, to where those streets are blocked up. You're not really taken away from any of the other businesses there. But it's allowing a much broader space and those businesses could still then sell. Like he's saying, you know, they'll be able to at least still make some money. And it would kind of, kind of go with the ambiance of Bisbee, I guess, not for a better word. You know, it'd be nice to have those open cafes if it's warm enough, you know. I mean, again, it's up to them.
Okay. Leslie, go ahead. Thank you.
I agree with Joni and Frank. I think it would be a great thing for the downtown businesses. And if we could block off Commerce and Subway, I think that would be great, too. Anything we can do to make this as safe as possible, I'm in favor of. Obviously, I'm hoping that we're talking about parking spaces directly in front of the restaurants and not where servers are running across the street or anything because that sounds dangerous to me. So I'm just hoping that we're talking about doing things as safely as possible when we're talking about doing this. So that's my only concern.
Hey? Anyone else? So I'm hearing a lot of, I think, what most of us feel. As far as blocking streets, leaving them closed for a long, long time, you know, Subway Street, if you blocked it off totally, it'd be the safest. But then again, people take deliveries off that street and so on. But there's parking places that could be given up on Subway. Commerce is another situation. We might be able to get by somewhat on Commerce. But, and on Main Street, my biggest concern would be that the police chief's not here tonight. But I would, I would like that, that this starts to happen. We have much harder patrol and get that speed limit sign out there that make people may realize, I swear, there's way too many fast cars go up Main Street. I've almost been run over myself. So I, when we start putting this out here, I want, I think it'll actually be a calming effect in some way. But I want to make sure people realize they've got to slow down through those areas. Miss, I'll go ahead, Joni.
Most of those deliveries that are set time, specific times, and they're generally in the morning. So I mean, that's something we could look at even to work around is, okay, we're going to open, we're going to close the streets down at this time every day. You know, deliveries will be able to deliver after deliveries go through. I mean, that's just a suggestion. I don't know.
I don't disagree with that. And if they would like to leave it set up and not have to, you know, putting tables out, put back in, they could have some parking places maybe full time or whatever they want to put in. I mean, this, this was, you know, came from the governor, some executive order. And I, and I think we should get on it and make sure our businesses have a chance to make this happen. Any comment, Joan, or anybody else? Or we all good? All right. I think we pretty well have a consensus.
One item, Mayor?
Yes.
If, you know, as you mentioned, you know, the governor included as an option under his executive order, I will let you know, a lot of the jurisdictions that we represent and handle have gone this route and have approved these extensions. And they do work, the, you know, and I think Teresa's very cognizant of the safety concerns. We've had those discussions with regard to, you know, the city and the city's liability, making sure that all those, those areas are addressed, the insurance, the waivers and different things like that. But one of the things was that if you do go forward with the motion, just be clear whether or not you would allow for city manager approval of that process or if it's something that you want brought back to council.
I'm going to make the motion that I move to approve a temporary permit extent. I'll start over, excuse me. I move to approve the temporary premise extension permit application for business establishments with administrative approval by the city manager.
Second?
Any further discussion? Lou, you have discussion?
No, no.
Oh, I'm scared. Sorry, hand, that's all. I'm going to ask for a vote on this one. Thank you, Ms. Cornell.
Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0 and unanimous. So Lou, on to item 12. This is the update and discussion of a pre-development planning grant from the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA. You're finally on, Mr. Harlow.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to give you a brief update on our pre-development grant application. Again, we did apply for this in April of this year. Initially, we were told that we were not approved. However, money has become available and we are now, we were awarded a grant. Just again, an update on how this all came about. I believe this began back in 1998 with the Border Environmental Cooperation Commission began, did a study on our collection system. During that study, they gave the city of Bisbee a list of recommended improvements. And part of those recommended improvements was an improvement to the old Bisbee sewer laterals. In 2000, about 2014, Westland Resources completed a preliminary engineering report that was completed in 2015. That was a requirement by WIFA, the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. That was a requirement for a grant application for construction of improvements to the old Bisbee lateral system. Sometime after 2015, I know that there were a lot of, there was a lot of change in administrative staff and this project seemingly just got lost. WIFA did contact Ms. Coleman and myself and let us, and let us know that this was in fact, was in fact the case. And so we got back on it. Have that grant. And we are looking forward to moving forward with Westland doing an update to this grant. Now, the grant, because it's five years old already, the age of the original study needs to be updated. In addition, we've, we've done some of these upgrades. We didn't just sit back and not let it go. We've been able to do some of those. So we'll have to update that study to reflect that. So again, we were, we do have that, that grant. And so we'll look forward to moving forward with Westland updating that engineering, preliminary engineering report.
And I'll just add that at the time, it was estimated to be a $30 million WIPA opportunity.
Yeah, I was on council back then. I remember one of the employees with a little sketch pad and going around to the whole town trying, marking where everything was running and doing. It was quite a, quite a situation. And yeah, it's a, we have them under stairways and everywhere else. So they're not, it's not going to be an easy job, but it definitely a job that I'm sure needs to be done. I think this is just for discussion. So if there's any questions, anybody? If not, we'll move on. We'll get on to number 13. This again, for you, Mr. Harlow. This is discussion and possible approval of a lease agreement. This is for the compact track loader, skid steer.
Skid steer. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, we presented this earlier in the year for approval for this lease purchase. At the time it was approved, we, for the skid steer, and again, a couple of items after this. The, this, this item presents the actual agreement to be signed. I know that there were some questions regarding the skid steer. And so I'd like to give you a little bit more information on that. The skid steer that we, that we specified is a little bit bigger than, than, there are some smaller ones that are available. However, the reason we chose this specific skid steer is that it has the ability to use more equipment, more attachments to it. More specifically, the 279 that we are specifying has the ability to have an attachment for a, for a, can't think of the word now, a milling machine. So our Streets Department can use this as a milling machine. In addition, we have the ability to add a snow blower to it. And we have the ability to add a wood chipper to it. The smaller skid steer, the one just below this, I believe is a 259 that does not have the ability to do that. We did look at purchasing a used one. We did, we did look at that. We were looking at probably saving somewhere in the $8,000 to $10,000 range. So then what we did look at is what were the differences between the warranty on a new machine versus a used machine? And the used machine would, as long as it is within the hours, it would still come with the manufacturer's warranty. So if we purchased one that had 500 hours, we'd still have 2500 hours worth of warranty. However, because we are a government entity and we purchased, we purchased a new one, essentially what happens is our warranty is a larger coverage. We get what is equivalent to a bumper-to-bumper warranty. Now, again, but when I say bumper-to-bumper, keep in mind, that doesn't mean like the windows and the tracks or those things that are meant to wear out. But we do get a larger warranty with that. If we go with a used machine, that comes with a powertrain and hydraulic warranty only. So I hope that I answered some of those questions that I know that were out there. I'd be happy to answer what I can. I did invite Mr. Clinton swap with Empire Machines, and he would be able to answer more specifics on the machines.
Okay. Take questions? Okay, um, take questions, my counsel. Go ahead, Lou.
This is for Mr. Harlow. These two pieces of equipment, the skid loader and the mini excavator are ideal for flood control work. They're good for clearing washes and small places where your bigger equipment can't get in. That's one of, that's probably the main reason why I voted for these, uh, in the first place. I see their value. Uh, there are complaints that have gotten from people in Ward Three about the condition of some of the washes in the area of Santa Cruz Drive, Graham Drive, Cochise Drive. There's a wash that goes through there that is really an alleyway, but because it's a swale, it carries most of the flow. My question to you is, how could I, am I, as a citizen of Visby, allowed to ask to have a work order put in to do that type of work?
Absolutely, absolutely. The way to do that is to go through, um, our online portal, go through our website. Um, and you report a concern that goes straight into our iWork work order system. We review those and we can assign a work order directly. Um, that's only one way. You can always call our office. Um, you can call our office, you can email and, uh, we can transport those right into a work order. So if you ever, if anybody has any issues, uh, with those types of things, absolutely feel free to, to do that.
Well, if we pass this tonight, you can expect me to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead, uh, Joni.
Um, I just have some issue with the whole fact that we, every time we turn around, it's buy, buy, buy. You know, I, I get the value of it down the road, but we're in a pandemic right now. And when you total this, not just this one, but all of them, we're talking a hundred grand. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean we need to spend it. Um, I just think we need to think about waiting on this because we keep talking about not having money. Yet, every time we turn around, oh, we gotta buy this piece of equipment, we have to buy that piece of equipment. There's, um, more reasonably priced pieces of equipment if it's in that dire need, but I just, um, am concerned that we spend money on some areas, but yet turn around and say we don't have money in other areas.
Okay. What else? Raise your hand. All right, I, I have a couple of comments. I actually, um, talked to Hastings about this. This particular skid loader, this two seventy-nine model is, I guess, the reason that has a better, you know, ability to, to run these other pieces of equip, um, attachments is because it has a little, a little more hydraulic, um, ability. Uh, the, uh, the smaller unit just, it's got the same size engine. It's got the basically same thing. It, it reaches all but about five inches of this one, but it doesn't have the ability to put on those attachments. And there is, there's twenty-three of those two fifty-nines available right at Empire right now. Uh, I researched over the, over the weekend, but for some reason, the two seventy-nine, the bigger one, just, they're just not out there. I did find two of them that are up at Wheeler Machinery. That's in Salt Lake, out of my old area. I have a friend who works there. And, uh, but one has eight hundred and thirty hours. Um, and like you said, it's, it's, uh, well, it's sixty thousand, but, and then it's a two thousand eighteen, then you have to transport it down. The other thing I did is I also looked at the rental. I was thinking, well, what if we could rent them when we need them? Um, I also did some due diligence on that and they ran out. If you just buy them by the day at five hundred or almost over fifteen hundred dollars a week, uh, then you have transportation costs to get them here and get them back. Um, so I kind of gave up on the, on the idea of the rent uh, because their time you have to plan and get them and, and get them back. So I don't have so much problem on this one, even though the one question I have of you, Mr., um, and, um, Harlow is, um, are we getting the insurance package with this too? That's six thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars on top of the seventy-three. That's what I see on, uh, on the page here. It says, I don't know if that's an option or if that's something that we're getting. There's seventy-three nine ninety-nine and then there's payment method. I think it says, "Application for C, uh, CIC Physical Damage Insurance." Are we getting physical damage insurance on this one? You know?
I'd have to look at that.
Not if you buy it.
It's, um, I don't know if it's just something they offered or if that's part of the figuring in cost besides the seventy-three. Insurance is six thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars if we take it. If we don't, then we have to prove we have insurance.
I, I don't believe we, we took that option.
My total for this.
You have insurance.
The, it's a little deceiving, and I remember this from our leases on our vehicles. There's also tax you have to pay on those leases. So it really comes out to be about a eight, eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars is the way I have it, if you, if you add in that insurance. But if not, then it's, then it's, uh, then it's, um, it's the seventy-three nine ninety-nine plus the, uh, the yearly tax of seven hundred and fifty dollars on top of that.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, that's why I want to know whether we were buying the insurance or we were providing our own for it.
No, we have insurance.
Okay. So I, I was all for buying one, getting a good used one. There's some good ones there, less, from anywhere from a hundred and fifty to three hundred hours. But if, if it won't do the job, then that's a different situation. But, uh, you know, they're fifty-five thousand, so for the, for a two twenty, but it's a smaller unit, so. Anyway, that was, I just want everybody to know that, that this was looked at. I have another issue on the, there, the, they do have some of the, the, the next one we have down the road. I'm gonna talk to you about that one, but, um, how about anybody else? Any comments or motion? Is there a motion?
I move to enter into the lease purchase agreement with Cat Financial for a compact track loader.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter into a contract with Cat. Uh, Ms. Cornau.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Nay.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Nay.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Nay.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes four three. All right. Gotta zoom down here. All right. Jeez, I'm sorry. There's a lot of contract here. Um, this will be, oh, it doesn't have an agenda item on it. Why does it have an agenda item on it?
Looking like two pages got scanned in. That shouldn't, yes, my apologies.
I'm gonna go down to, I do have a little paperwork here. So let's see, this will be discussion of possible approval of a lease purchase agreement for a mini excavator.
You know, this, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's, it's, it's the exact same thing. Um, we, this is just the, the contract portion of it. All of the terms are, and conditions are as, as I presented them, um, when they were previously approved. We'll, we'll have any, I'll try to answer any questions we have with that.
Aye.
There we voted against it.
No, no, no.
I'll lead off on this one because I, again, I did the research on this one and, and Empire right now, I don't know if you checked, but they have a two, also a twenty twenty, it's the same model. Um, it has two hundred and thirty-seven hours on it. And they have it listed for forty-seven thousand, um, instead of the fifty-six thousand. If you drop back a year into the two thousand nineteen, they have two of those. Um, one has two hundred and thirty-seven hours on it, the other one has five hundred and eighty hours on it. Um, of course, the five hundred hour is a thirty-seven thousand dollar purchase and, uh, and the two hundred hours is a forty-two thousand dollar purchase. So, um, I really, I have to say that if we could purchase this with a five-year contract versus leasing, I think we could come up, um, the overall price on this is fifty-six thousand. Um, and if we can get it for forty-five, I know it's ten thousand different, but I think that's an important ten thousand dollars. So that's the way I'm working, failing on it. And what research I've done. I, and I feel the same way on rental, it just won't, it won't pencil out. So anyway, that's my comment, but please feel free, anybody else.
Again, Mr. Budge, that the, if, if it's the same model number, uh, the only difference would be then the, the warranty on that.
Right. I don't, I'm not sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
We would, we would only be, we would only be, um, getting a different warranty. Um, but, uh, I, I would be happy to, to work with, uh, Mr. Clint, uh, Mr. Swap, I'm sorry. Um, if, uh, directed to, to try to, to, uh, secure a, a used one, um, at the, the same model.
Yeah, it's the three oh three point five E. That's a, they, they call them all certified pre-owners. That's what they do. They go in and, and, and look at them all. Um, I, uh, you know, I'll give it on the other one because it's really what needed a bigger unit than what, what the smaller ones won't handle. But this one, I think we could do a really good used one. It probably will not be in the closed cab. And to be honest, that doesn't bother me too much. I think our guys are tough enough to tough it out with an open cab versus a air-conditioned cab. So I, I don't think we'll get the exact same model that way, but we'll get the exact same thing. We'll do the work. So, um, that's where I'm at. Um, but I want to hear from anybody else. Go ahead, Lou.
If we can save ten thousand, did you say ten thousand dollars in buying a used one?
It depends on which, if you go for the twenty twenty, which, um, is the same year, it's this year, it's, they have a list of forty-seven thousand. Um, would be about nine thousand. We dropped back one year and, and went down to two hundred and thirty-hour unit. We'll get that for forty-two thousand. So that would be about a fourteen thousand dollar savings. That's what I, that's what I've seen.
Uh, Mr. Harold, would you be, uh, amenable to re, revisiting this issue and seeing if we can save that kind of money?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. If we're directed to do so, we'll, we'll do our best to, we'll do our best to, with what we're told to do.
Well, I think that's worth considering. That's a substantial savings. That's my comment. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't want to be the only one.
I would agree, Mr. Mayor, that it's, it's makes sense to look for the, the best deal. There's no doubt about it.
I agree also. I agree also.
All right. It, you know, it, it's, it's a twofold thing to me. One, a unit will do what we need it to do. And number two, you know, if, if we can get one that is, will do what we need to do with the, and, and a, a bit of savings. So I would like to table this one and, and see if I could get, uh, uh, our city manager to, uh, and, you know, talk to, uh, our public works director to go back and see if we can't find. And I'll be glad to, it's on the website, but I'll, I can send you the information I, that I, I gleaned from them and, and have the, the salesman call me if you like. I, I would, wouldn't mind that at all. But if that's, uh, what, uh, seems like we would do, I, uh, move to, uh, table item fourteen, which is discussion of possible approval of a lease purchase agreement for a mini excavator.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. Um, I guess on a, this, I could just say an aye or nyes, or aye or nay. All those in favor of tabling this item signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, sounds like it was unanimous. So thank you. Um, now we'll move on to the, quickly to the trailer. Um, you don't need to, you know, it's the same thing like we've had. Um, I'll have to, I'll admit I've done work on this one too, and those aren't really giving up very much. And it's really not a huge, huge purchase, um, in comparison to those other pieces. And, and, uh, I didn't find any decent used, uh, trailers that you could drive things on and off. We don't have any way to, to do it otherwise. So I, I'm fine with going in on this one myself, but now that's my, my position. I'm willing to listen to anybody else. Any other comment? Well, Lou, you seem like to be the man. Why don't you make the motion on this one too?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. I move to enter into the lease purchase agreement with Cat Financial for a trailer, a Trail King trailer.
Let's second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to enter into agreement for the trailer and, um, lease purchase agreement, I should say, for the trailer. Uh, that's who we'll have to have a vote on. Ms. Cornau.
Councilmember Pollock, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Nay.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Nay.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein. Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion approved, four through. All righty, I think we're at the end, aren't we?
I'll try to be quick. I'll try to be quick.
Okay. Uh, yeah, now we have our comments.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, first, and just to let you know that Attorney Estes will be working, um, with staff to get, the proper zoning information over to Planning Commission. It will be published as a public hearing, uh, ideally for their meeting in February. So, um, that public hearing will be coming up in regards to recreational marijuana, um, within our zoning code. And then I think I shared with everyone that the Cochise County Tourism and Economic Council, did post their marketing plan, and you can also find that on our website. And then in addition to Executive Order twenty twenty sixty that we just discussed, um, there's also an Executive Order twenty twenty fifty-nine, um, regarding mitigation requirements for events. And, um, there are a few samples in your packet. We'll come back, um, with something similar to what you just did. Unfortunately, the two large events that were taking place had already been approved or acknowledged by the council. And the farmer's market already had a plan in place from, hmm, April or May of last year. So that's all been posted, um, sent to AZ DHS. Um, it's on the website, it's at the park. Um, and we filled out the, the form, the online form for them as well. So, um, that's covered. And then for Reza Crossed America, um, that was already acknowledged in a proclamation by the mayor. And there was discussion at that time about social distancing. Uh, plan has been provided and that plan, again, has been posted. So, um, we've met the requirements, mitigation requirements for those two events.
And if that's it.
That's it.
I know it was a little long and I, but I appreciate it. I think the, the public appreciates it. And I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas or Happy Hanukkah and, uh, enjoy our three-week break. So, thank you, everybody. Motion to adjourn?
I would move. Overhead. I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. So moved. We are adjourned.
Good night.
Happy holiday. What's that, Joan?
No, I was talking to Frank.
Oh.
Responsibility of adjourning. That was, that was Bill.
That was Bill's job, right?
Yeah, you have to take that responsibility now.
I've given that. Thanks, everybody.
Merry Christmas to everyone.